So this is the September 7th, 2022, meeting of the Newbury Planning Board. And as a preliminary matter, this is Larry Murphy, Chair of the Newbury Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Peter Pecos?
Yes.
George Morris will not be with us, that I know. Leslie Matthews is not here yet, we're expecting her. Woody Knight?
Yeah.
And Mary Stone?
I'm here.
And town staff, would you please respond in the affirmative? Martha Taylor?
Here.
And anticipated speakers or presenters, Matt Connors from Hancock Associates?
He's here.
I can see you, Matt, so.
And I just, excuse me, I just got a message from Leslie, she's having computer problems.
Oh yeah, I was having some problems myself, actually.
So she'll, she'll be here as soon as she can.
Okay. So the September 7th, 2022, open meeting of the Newbury Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which extends the governor's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, Generalized Chapter 38, Section 20 until March 31, 2023. The order suspends the requirement of the Open Meeting Law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location, and allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convening by video conference via Zoom, as posted on the Planning Board's agenda, which can be found on the town's website, and which identifies how the public may join. You may join us by going to http://zoom.us and entering meeting ID number 83271413056, or by calling 1-929-2056099US, New York, and entering meeting ID number, meeting, the meeting ID number one prompted. Please note that the meeting is being recorded and that attendees are participating by video and/or telephone conference. The meeting is also being broadcast live through local access cable channel nine on Zoom in that www.tncctv.org, and the recording will be available on the Newbury Access YouTube channel. Meeting materials were provided to the board members prior to the meeting for review. Applicants or their representatives may be called upon to speak and, if needed, share information to the screen. Please state your intention after you have been called. For the meeting ground rules, before we turn to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. As Chair, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I will go down the list of board members, inviting each by name to provide any comments, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, for all attendees, except board members and staff, please remember to mute your computer using your mute button or your phone star six to toggle mute/unmute when you are not speaking. Please use earbuds or earphones with tablets or cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants can see you and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. For any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through me, taking care to identify yourself when you wish to speak. For public comment, there will be an opportunity for public comment and questions during the public hearings. After board members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to comment and/or ask questions as follows. I will see questions and comments through the Zoom raise hand function. Voice Conference participants, to raise your hand hover over the bottom of the, I'm sorry, video conference participants, to raise your hand hover over the bottom of the Zoom window below the photo gallery and click on the gray hand that appears. Please ensure your name is fully and correctly displayed on the participant list. You may rename yourself by using the more function next to your name. For telephone participants, to raise your hand in a Zoom meeting, hit star nine on your phone keypad. I will then allow questions and comments from members of the public who have raised their hands in the order in which they are listed, which is determined by the order in which people click on the raised hand function. Each participant will be called on to provide his or her name and address, and then ask a question or make a comment. I will afford the applicant/participant or his or her representative the opportunity to reply. Your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your question. I will then continue down the list of those in the raised hand column, and again, afford the participant or applicant or representative an opportunity to speak. Should there be a physical or electronic submittal of questions or concerns, they will be noted for the record. And again, the participant, applicant, or representative will be afforded the opportunity to speak if the issues raised have not yet been addressed. And finally, each vote taken at the meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. So now we can turn to the agenda. First item is a submission on appearance by, I'm sorry, Matt Connors from Hancock Associates. Matt, you have a submission of an A and R plan for 42 Middle Road. So we'll give you the floor, sir.
That sounds good. I'm going to share my screen with the two plans that we're, we're going to be talking about tonight. Just make sure we have the right one going up here. Okay, so before you is the A and R planned title, that's one site plan in Newbury, Mass. This is for a approval required of 42 Middle Road. It's at the intersection of Highfield Road and Middle Road on the northwest corner. The plan basically identifies the existing property to be subdivided along Middle Road, the zoning. I'm going to zoom in here. Zoning is residential, family. All criteria is met for lot area frontage setback. Height, obviously, there's nothing built yet, but it will be met, and contiguous upland. Let's see. So the bottom here, this is middle, this is Middle Road. Can everybody see that well?
I think so.
Say again?
I, yeah, I'm fine with it.
Okay. So we're, so the subdivision is basically along the middle here. The existing property is remaining with Lot 1, and the proposed Lot 2 is going to be the new property. There is a pond that's being subdivided, kind of half on each of the properties, as well as an intermittent stream and some wetlands. Any questions on this plan, and I'll switch over to the site plan?
I don't have anything, Pete, do you have anything?
No, I don't, thanks.
And Woody?
No, I don't.
And I think Leslie is with us now. Leslie, do you have any questions, or?
No, I don't, but I, I'm not up to speed on the entire presentation.
Okay. Matt, maybe you could just briefly summarize that again for Leslie, she's joining us a little late.
Sure, no problem. So this, this project is for 42 Middle Road. Let me zoom out so you can see the whole plan. The property is located at the northwest intersection of Highfield Road and Middle. It is zoned, zoom in here, is zoned residential agriculture, single family. The existing lot and the new lot, the existing lot, Lot 1 and the new lot, Lot 2, meet the lot area frontage setback. And while there's nothing built on Lot 2 yet, it will meet the height, there's no problem with that, as well as contiguous upland area. The lot is being divided along Middle Road as a, as a primary. The existing one and a half story ranch is going to remain with Lot 1, and the new Lot, Lot 2, will have a new residence built. That's the next plan that I'll show you. The pond is being subdivided, as well as the intermittent stream, and the wetlands will be going with Lot 2. Pretty straightforward.
All right, I have, I do have a couple of questions. First of all, this was presented prior to the rain that we've just had. So I know the Concom had signed off on it. Has there been any significant changes since the rain has come? And as far as the pond is concerned, is it a streamed pond? Or is it a pond that fills up during natural water like rain?
Okay, there's, there's been no change to the property since the rain. Pond has an intermittent stream that comes in and goes out of it, and that's primarily what feeds it.
All right, okay, because that was a significant concern of mine, that the presentation was made prior to the recent waterfall. And things do change, Concom signed off on it. We haven't had, I don't know what their back history is as far as the property is concerned, but, I mean, is it known to be a non, a, a, a non-flooded area?
None, I'm not sure.
So when, when the rain comes, does it get, do areas of the parcel get flooded?
No, because there's, there's a significant topography to the site. So the pond is pretty localized in where it is.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Leslie. Woody, any questions?
No, no questions.
And Mary, any question?
I don't have any questions.
Matt, I, I know that there was some issue about whether or not there was adequate access because of the wetlands, and which is, I believe, why you went before Concom. Can you talk about that a little bit?
So let me, let me switch over to that plan, so you guys can see. All right, so this is the plan that was submitted to Conservation Commission. I'm going to zoom in a little bit, so it's a little bit larger for everybody to see. Hopefully, oh, that's a little bit too much, huh?
I see no change.
There we go.
We still got the same plan.
You still have the same plan, all right, hang on, let's do this. Is that better?
Yes.
All right. So this was the plan that was submitted to the Conservation Commission. It identifies the driveway, apartment house. Here's the driveway, it comes up through this, there's a sliver of upland that is the closest point to the rear upland, that the driveway goes over, is along the edge of the pond, and then we have the new dwelling up in the rear, and the septic system is up here. So the, so the design of the driveway is minimizes the impact to the wetland by crossing the wetland that its narrowest point.
So I'm, I'm going to just, if, if nobody minds, I'm just going to interject here. The, what you have proposed, the, the submittal you have given to the Concom and the submittal that you have given to the planning board are two different things. Are we looking at a good fit as far as like the wetlands are concerned? And to put, to split the properties and, and put another home on the property?
So the, the submittal package that was submitted to the Conservation Commission was reviewed and approved by the Conservation Commission. The package that was submitted to you was basically identifies the, the zoning and subdivision process.
Larry, do you want me to jump in here for a sec from a Concom? Sure, so Leslie, the, it was submitted to Concom to identify the wetland boundaries, and those were flagged and marked, that actually it was, it was reflagged. And there was a restoration area that was created, and I'm sure this, this might be touched upon, to adjust for the wetland component that is going to be influenced. And then there's a crossing that has been addressed as well over the intermittent stream. So this was kind of evaluated by the Conservation Commission prior to its new commissioners coming on board, and then when the new commissioners came on board. So it was pretty well vetted, and I hope that will.
Thanks, Pete. That, that basically was the question that I had. I, I just wanted to know if it had been vetted prior to all the new people that came on board.
Right, and did, yeah.
So I'm good.
Hey, anything, Woody, anything further?
No, I don't have any questions at this time.
Mary, anything further? Martha, anything you'd like to add?
Just a couple of things in terms of what the board really needs to make a decision on. And one is, does it have frontage on a public way, which it does? And second, does it have direct and practical access from a public way? And, you know, based on the process that, that the proposed plan has gone through with the Conservation Commission, and the fact that they have approved the, the wetland crossing, I think, I think that determination can be made, that there is direct and practical access to the developable, developable area of the lot.
Thank you. I, I don't, I don't think we have any members of the public in attendance to work.
I don't see any.
Okay. So, well, so just to summarize it, it appears that the, that we have sufficient frontage, sufficient contiguous upland, and also sufficient lot size, as well as the practical access that you talked about, Martha. So I don't know what the pleasure of the board is, but if we're inclined to approve this, I think a motion to endorse the A and R plan entitled Site Plan in Newbury, Mass, 42 Middle Road, prepared by Martin Patazzi of Hancock Associates, dated August 16th, 2022, would be in order. That's the pleasure of the board.
So moved.
Thank you, Woody, is there a second?
There's a second.
Thank you. Any discussion, Pete?
No discussion, thanks.
Any further discussion, Leslie?
No further discussion at this point in time, no, thank you.
Woody, any further discussion?
No.
Mary, any, any further? All right, so we have a motion seconded. Pete, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
And Leslie, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
And Mary, anything you'd add, your opinion? And I vote yes as well, so it passes unanimously. All right, anything further?
I'm just on process. Matt, since we're meeting by Zoom, obviously, the plan isn't going to, the Mylar's not going to be signed tonight. So I will coordinate with the Chair, who is authorized to sign and get that done, and should I let you know as soon as it's ready for pickup?
Excellent, I would appreciate it.
All right.
No, thank you, everybody, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so under new business, we have none, and old business, we have none. That just brings us, brings us, excuse me, to liaison reports. How about the Select Board, Leslie, anything?
Well, Select Board, there was a public, beginning of a public hearing for Marsh Meadow Lane, which has been continued and advised to regroup on that. Oh, let's see. The, the coast sweep Plum Island Beach people would like to get a lot, volunteers to come down and help clean up the beach on Sunday, 9/18. And there's been a request for reduced speed limits in different areas around town that they would like to also put up the, the radar. I can't think of the name of that, what it is, but to say what you're, what you can travel at, and if you're going over the speed limit. And that was pretty much the, oh, and then there were the trailers for where they store old papers. They're going to remove those and, and put them up for surplus. Other than that, that's it.
Okay, thank you. So the CBA, their regular meeting is next Thursday, a week from tomorrow, on the 15th. They have a fairly busy meeting, several public hearings. But one interesting issue, you may recall at one point I reported on a public hearing they held at number 10, at number 10, 10th Street on the island, and it was kind of interesting in that there were two grandfathered structures on that lot. One of them burned down, and the applicant went before the, the CBA, and I wanted to rebuild the, the structure that had burned, which incidentally had been encroaching on a budding property, and wanted to also take down and rebuild the other structure. The only reason I really mentioned, and it was appealed by the neighbors, incidentally, it just, when you think there's nothing new on Plum Island, there's always, it seems like there's something comes up. It just might be an interesting case to watch, just in terms of how the.
I have been following that as well, Larry.
I'm sorry, Leslie?
I've been following that as well.
Yeah, it, it, interesting, interesting situation. It's nothing I expect will come before the Planning Board, but I think it's.
It's, it is an interesting situation where, you know, there were two structures, now there's one structure, and they want to go forward with something else. So it, it's kind of a conundrum, I guess you could say.
Yeah, the, the, the board took some time with the CBA, I should say. In, in any event, unless you have something to add, Leslie, that's all I have on that.
Can I just like interject a little something that, a tidbit of information? You know, I'm going to withdraw that, I'm going to withdraw that, that's something I will do at a later date. So just forget that I went forward.
Very good, we'll move on to the Conservation Commission then.
Yep, there was a bylaws workshop that took place last Tuesday. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend, but the next scheduled meeting, I believe, in two weeks.
Is that it?
Short and sweet.
Okay, and MVPC.
So the commissioners who were off for the summer will be resuming meetings next, next Thursday on the 15th. The planners' meeting will be the following week. But even though we haven't been meeting, they've been very busy with some grant applications on behalf of all their communities, one of which, and I can't remember if I mentioned this before, is, is work that they've now completed of bylaw and regulation review for all the member communities of everything pertaining to stormwater, and they've prepared a report on that. It kind of goes to our MS4 year four requirements. And some items we will probably want to consider bringing into, into our, or updating in our, in our zoning bylaw. So I have a copy of the report and will either put that up on our webpage or perhaps on the stormwater webpage.
Martha, if I can ask, with the redistricting of the North Shore, will any of our grants be implicated or be subject to lesser evaluation? Because now the district has become a little bit larger?
I, I'm not aware of any changes that will be made to any of the grants. The grants are really based on municipalities, as opposed to, you know, any, if you're talking about sort of the political boundaries of the districts and stuff, I don't, I'm not aware of anything that's going to be impacted by that.
Okay.
If I do hear of anything, I'll let you know.
Yeah, I, I would, wouldn't expect there to be any, anything like that, but. Okay.
Spreading out a little bit further, it's just one of those things that you just look at and say, where do we fall into?
Right, I mean, most, most of the, most of the grants are really done on a, on a municipal basis, or for MVPC. They either apply for grants for a specific municipality when the municipality asks for it, or they'll apply for something for all of the communities within, within the region. So again, redistricting really doesn't, you know, doesn't factor into that.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Welcome.
And the planners' report, Martha?
So I've got a few things here. As I mentioned at the last meeting, the DHCD did issue the revised guidance for the MBTA communities. We've gotten a guidance overview letter from Town Council, which I'm reviewing now. It's, it's kind of at a, at a higher level, and we need to then dive into what this all means for, for Newbury. And again, fortunately, our requirements have been much reduced from, from the original guidance. And I think, as I also mentioned, we'll need to put together an action plan by January 31st of next year on how we plan to achieve compliance. So we'll be working with, with Town Council and MVPC, and Mass Housing Partnership will also be providing technical assistance on that. I did send an announcement for a webinar series that MHP is doing related to the MBTA communities this morning. And I think if you have a chance to, I've signed up for all of them and hope that I can attend them. I did attend one on wastewater management at the, at the Housing Institute earlier this year by Hancock, and assuming it's the same guy, it was an excellent presentation. And I think it really gives a good understanding of, you know, the, the issues that developers face in putting wastewater treatment systems in. There's, there's a huge gap in terms of cost effectiveness between really small ones and the really large ones. There's not much in a middle ground here. So I think in terms, you know, in terms of us really understanding these things and the impact on the developers, I think it was very useful. Other things, I've received a draft in our plan for a property down at 1 and 3 Main Street for review. And depending on how it looks, they're hoping to get it on the agenda. And, um, depending on how it looks, uh, they're hoping to get it on the agenda for the next meeting on the twenty-first. Couple of things regarding Crane Properties, which is developing the property at sixty-eight Green Street. I'm mentioning this, there have been unfortunately some ongoing issues regarding construction vehicles trying to access the site. Down Noise Lane. Um, and Google Maps is actually sending, sending people down Noise Lane to get to sixty-eight Green Street, which makes absolutely no sense in the world. I've submitted two corrections so far, it has not been corrected. We're working with Mike DeSantos to try to, uh, remedy it by signage, um. And we're going to be meeting with, um, Susan Noise and I and Mike DeSantos are going to be meeting tomorrow afternoon to, to. See what else we can do to try to address this, that they've been getting concrete trucks going down and all kinds of things, and it's been just an ongoing issue. All the vendors are being told that they shouldn't follow Google Maps to get to the site, but it's happening anyway.
Yeah, I, you know, I completely understand that, um, when I've had people. Uh, look for my address, they send them over to West Newbury.
You send them where?
West Newbury.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's not very helpful, no.
I, I had someone at the house just last week and the same thing happened, you know, Google sent, Google Maps sent her to West Newbury.
So, yeah, it, it, it's not. Not a first timer.
Yeah, and, and we, we got a lot of pizza deliveries for thirty-two and three.
If they're free, Larry, come on.
No, I don't want to pay for it.
I hope it's good pizza.
I noticed on sixty-eight Green Street, they have a big sign out there now. It's a, it's as big as a sheet of plywood, so.
Yeah, and, and that's, that's why, to truly try to get everybody going there, but. I, you know, I looked at Google Maps and, and the route is right down there, it's down Noise Lane and sixty-eight Green Street is being shown out in the middle of a field. So, um, you know, it's unfortunate that they haven't responded to the corrections that we've sent, but hopefully we'll get it sorted out. Um, and the board also received a, um. A notification from, also from Michael DeSantos, um, who has bought twelve Middle Road. Um, which was, it's a single family lot, there was a, a small house on it which has been demolished. And he's going to be developing it, the reason I'm bringing this up is that he said in his letters, in his letter, that. All activities on the site will occur in accordance with the guidelines set forth by the Newbury Planning Department. But in fact, as a single family lot, it's not a subdivision or anything like that. It's really going to be up to the building commissioner and, and building code and our zoning bylaws opposed to anything that, that will be. Providing guidance on, but if asked, I will, I will. Help guide the ship if I, if I need to. Uh, next, I wanted to remind everybody that, uh, the public hearing on the one forty R Main Street, the special permit modification opens. On the twenty-first, uh, the notices have all gone out, the first ad was in the paper on Monday. Um, I have put the application and the plans up on the website on, under current project applications and plans. But if you, anybody would like hard copies of the plans at eleven by seventeen, let me know and I'll get those from Rob. I'm, I'm sorry.
One forty main?
One, one forty R main, yeah, so the, the break project, and this is, this is for the access road going down to the utility electric action.
The, uh, yes, sir.
Yeah, this, you say a property, right, right.
Okay.
So, um, anyway, if you, if anybody would like hard copies of the plans, let me know. Okay.
What else do we have left for the twenty-first so far, Martha?
Right now, it's actually just the A and R and the public hearing, uh, Emily was going to be coming back. For a follow-up on the master plan, but we've been having some discussions with MVPC. On their help with revising the transportation element, which they had done initially. And they're also looking at the economic development section for us, um. Because of all the work that they've done, uh, and programs that they have in place now, which they didn't have. At the time that we were working on this before, and so we're, we're looking at getting. Getting that input from them and the mapping, getting all of that from them by early November, so she's. If this, uh, is acceptable to the board, we talked about having her come to the October fifth meeting instead.
So, uh, we don't have a master plan committee, we're just relying on. Uh, outsider to put this together for us?
He, he, can I get, so actually, that's not the case. The, the majority of the master plan was done, just for clarification, and Martha, if I'm not speaking correctly, please do correct me. The components that, that, uh, our consultant is doing is the components that weren't finished and updating our data, because our data was stale. So a majority of the master plan has already been done, and we had the input from a lot of work groups, which is great. Um, and, uh, very useful, so as she puts it all together to pull all those pieces together. So that's basically what she's doing now, she's pulling all the pieces together, uh, and just putting the data in, which is really great.
Right, and that's basically what, what she described at her presentation last time, you know, taking all of this, making a consistent voice, consistent format. And.
That's, that's great, I, you know, I understand it there. And Pete, thank you so much, I think that anybody that is viewing our meeting tonight. Or will view it on YouTube will appreciate your explanation on how. This is all working out, because there is a. Big question mark over the master plan and how it's being.
Yep, I understand, yeah, and that's why I said that, uh, Les, hey, can I go back a second, Martha? On the first thing that you said in your planners' report, uh, the workshop that's, uh, that would be really helpful, the housing component, will that be recorded, do you know?
Um, I don't know whether it's going to be recorded or not, but I had the same question and I will find out.
Cool, cool, because in case we couldn't meet it, I think, uh, make it, I think that'd be a great thing for folks to record, uh, watch or record, I'm trying to articulate my words tonight.
Yeah, no, I, I think so too, because there are nine of them, and, and, you know, it's unlikely that somebody's going to be able to, to get to all of them. So I will find that out.
Thank you.
And for clarification, this was in the email that we got from you earlier.
Yes, yeah.
Oh, and one more thing too is, um, when the presentation was given for the draft. On the master plan at our last meeting, I, I thought we were going to. Be given a PDF. On that file. Just for review purposes, is that still in the, in the works, or was I? Uh, was I not thinking, you know, that was gonna happen?
No, I, I emailed that out today, so unfortunately, it's a little late in getting that out, but. Yeah, if, if you have a chance to check your inbox, it should be there, if not, please, let me know.
Yeah, like, yeah, I'm looking forward to reviewing that myself.
And any, any comments or questions or anything, please, um, let me know and. It will be addressed.
It's happening, it's moving along, it's great.
Yeah, I think we can see the end of the road here on this. Um, wonderful, uh, so that, is that it, anything else, Martha?
No, that was it, thank you.
So that brings us to the April twentieth, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes, has everyone had an opportunity to review those?
I have not. You have not.
No, all right.
We couldn't open them, so.
I'm sorry, Woody, I couldn't catch that.
I'm sorry, I, I couldn't open them earlier, so.
Okay, so, uh, I, I, I didn't attend that meeting, so I'd be abstaining in any event, so maybe we ought to put this, uh. Uh, these many, uh, meeting minutes off until the next meeting, Martha.
Yes, no, that makes sense, and Woody, if you have trouble with the attachment, let me know, I can always put a hard copy out for you.
Okay, I think it was the same problem as logging into the meeting tonight, because as soon as I did whatever it wanted me to do. The minutes popped up first, and then the meeting agenda popped up, so I should be able to see him after I get off this meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. If I have a problem, I'll let you know.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, it's interesting, you had problems getting on, Woody had, I think Leslie did, and I did as well.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know what else is, something's going on, but. Well, that, uh, unless anyone has anything else, uh, that concludes our business for this evening, so, uh. I would.
Would you like a motion?
I would, I would entertain a motion.
A motion to adjourn then.
Second, Leslie, thank you, uh, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Peter, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Leslie, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Uh, Mary, any input in favor as well?
Yes, I just want to quote the famous Pete Pecos, who said, short and sweet, yes.
And I vote yes as well, so, uh. We are adjourned at seven forty-three PM, so, thank you all.
Thank you, everybody, have a great night.